Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, number 16th, special meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I'd ask you to place it on silent. I call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask Clerk Domingo to call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any councilmember comments this evening, Councilmember Barnes?
Yes, I'd like to make a correction to an article in the Albion Recorder. There's a comment concerning medical marijuana that the council was unanimous on not having dispensaries. I want that corrected. I fully support dispensaries. I voted that way that night. The citizens of the state of Michigan voted a few years back to have marijuana legal as a medical additive, and I totally support that. I feel without dispensaries in Albion, we're missing out on the big picture.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, in addition to Councilmember Barnes, I also voted in support of dispensaries at the meeting. So I want that noted and corrected in the paper as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take the time out to thank everyone that came to the town hall meeting yesterday located at the Washington Gardner Building. I hope that information got out to you that you may have been seeking. And I thank Dr. Mitchell and the mayor for coming to speak, and also Krista from the land bank and our vistas. I just want to say thank you.
Are there any further comments from council this evening? So I sent an article to council today. As we all are aware, there are a number of ballot measures that are in the process of getting signatures. The one in particular that I sent to council was regarding, I guess, the recreational legalization of recreational use of marijuana. And it seems as if, while the numbers have not been certified by the Secretary of State, it seems like they've far exceeded the numbers of signatures needed to put that on the ballot. I remember during the work sessions that we had regarding facilities in Albion, the comment was made that when voters approved medical marijuana use in Michigan, it was basically a majority vote in all 83 of Michigan's counties. And if this is on the ballot next year, which seems likely, the voters in Albion are going to get a chance to vote and have a say. And I think that might be helpful potentially. By that time, we would have had at least a year of four of the five facilities. And so then we could see how voters respond to that and maybe revisit the issue. So it gives us some time, but just wanted to make council aware of that. Seeing no further council comments, we will move on to public comment. Persons addressing the city council show that their comments are no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum and state your name and address. Are there any, is there any public comment this evening?
Hi, Eric Tobin, 409 West Ash. I wanted to come to you tonight both as a citizen and as the president of the Albion Clerical Alliance, which is the union that handles the finance department mainly downstairs. The one issue that we saw was that you're looking at adding staff to the city. And it's the union's position that we hope that you add any staff to the city as full-time. Full-time employees are, you know, the city plays a leadership role in the community. And if the city's focusing on hiring part-time individuals and not paying them benefits for the hard work that they do, then, you know, other businesses will see that and say, well, we're just going to hire a part-time. And then how do those individuals, how are they able to benefit by, you know, having the benefits of having a full-time income to support their families, to pay for, you know, living in Albion, hopefully? And then also, you know, buying products and services here within the community. So it's the union's position, and by the way, it also is in our contract that it prohibits part-time staff. So just wanted to make the council aware of that. And we talked with Cheryl about it, and Cheryl brought us a position. I asked the members of her, but they voted it down, so, to allow part-timers or not. So just wanted to make sure that with you. Thank you.
Is it, shift change. Are there any additional public comments this evening, on the agenda, I should say? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move forward to item A, discussion approval of specific MML training with council. I'll start this off. Basically, with the manager's decision to rescind her resignation and the council discussion that followed, I think we all agreed that it would be helpful to have facilitated, as we've done in the past, facilitated training and discussions regarding ways to improve, I guess, I'd say council management, council manager relations. And I know that Councilmember Reed had suggested, I guess, an attorney from the, I guess, the western part of the state. And I had spoken with the president of the MML. So I guess I just wanted to kind of start a discussion about, in light of a question that Councilmember Barnes, or concern that Councilmember Barnes had raised, what topics in particular would we like to discuss? That's one. And then also, just maybe potentially get some dates here when we could do that. And so just wanted to kind of start that discussion off. Is there any kind of initial discussion? Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. I think at the very heart of all of this is the differential viewpoint of interpretation of what our charter says are our annual goals. So I think from a training point of view, that's helpful. But I think what really has to happen is that the charter has to be interpreted in a way that we all understand and then act on.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's one of the concerns that, how do you say? Training's always good, more information's always good. But really, I think the nature of home rule government in Michigan really leaves a lot of the things that are not addressed in the charter up to, and not addressed by state statutes and court decisions, those kinds of things, up to council to fill in. The question becomes, like you said, when there are provisions in the charter, you know, for example, you know, we had this discussion about, the charter has a comment about the mayor is supposed to keep himself abreast, or herself abreast of the public affairs of the community and report that back to council. So the nature in which the mayor does that is not spelled out in the charter. It's not explicit. So it becomes a situation where if council were to elaborate on that, that's something we could do. But it's not a self-explanatory provision. I think a lot of the, a number of provisions of the charter are like that, they say certain things, but, you know, we have to flesh them out. I would hope that having, you know, experienced elected officials or administrators come down and talk with us and see, talk with us, we could basically decide how we might go about doing that better and kind of fleshing that out. So, you know, so I think one of the ideas that the MML president suggested was to have one or two seasoned municipal administrators come down, as well as, you know, maybe two, one or two elected officials, and just really see, like, you know, when it comes to communication, when it comes to issues of, I know we deal with setting the agenda, for example, that's actually a good point. The charter says that the clerk prepares the agenda, but it doesn't really say who actually decides what order the items are put on there. That's something I think that the council probably could decide through council rules. You know, we can include that. But that's kind of what I'm, I would look, or would like to get out of a training is to see what other cities do to handle the kind of nitty-gritty things that are not explicit in the charter. Councilmember French.
So help me understand, do you agree or disagree that we need attorneys or professionals to interpret the role of the mayor in relation to the city manager as outlined in our charter?
Well, I think the...
I'm looking for a yes or a no.
The, my answer to you is, I'm very confident in Attorney Harkness and his ability to answer those kinds of questions, which we've turned to him a number of times to answer that. The question becomes, if I, like I said, I can whip it up on my phone and read it, but the question becomes, if the charter says a certain thing, it doesn't flesh it out, per se. And so I think that's, that's the issue we run into is who fleshes that out? And I would think that the council should be able to put policies and procedures in place to provide guidance to us. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in agreement with Councilman French. And the gentleman that I suggested, I suggested him because I called and I talked with him. And his, that's all he handles, is governance. All he handles is working with councils and with cities on management issues. And if we're going to get someone from MML, I think that's what we should get too. I know Cullen is quite capable, but I think we need someone, I think we're putting him in a position that he should not be put in. So therefore, I think that we should get someone outside of Albion, someone who does not handle anything but that, or that and city affairs, to do that.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm hoping we're not only talking about doing one training, right?
Yeah.
I'm hoping that this is an ongoing commitment that we're willing to say we want to participate in. So I think the attorney piece is a good piece to have. I think the MML piece, I think that we need to commit to ongoing things. So we could train with the attorney and interpret things within the charter, one training session. The next training session, we could have the MML president come down. I think everybody's ideas are good, I just, let's just make it happen.
And so that was really my question, because the last time we had the citywide training in January or February, there was a session for council, and there was a session for council and the city boards. And so, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, really doing both. Because, you know, there's an element of, for example, like I said, like if, like I said about the agendas, the charter really doesn't speak to who actually determines the, you know, the order of items placed on there. I think generally what we've done is, you know, the order in which they're turned in to the manager or the clerk, or in some cases, though, I know the manager has kind of reordered them to be more, you know, locked. There's a series of votes. But again, that's something that's not in the charter. So that's really something that the council has to make a decision about. Councilmember Reed.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, I know that you have requested before that we change, go through a charter change, okay? This will help us, because you're saying that there's things about the charter that's not addressed. Someone from MML is in, and they're working with us on things that we are having problems with. They can help to recommend to us what we might do about the charter.
And that's, and I guess, like I said, I think we're not really, from what I'm hearing, I don't think there's really a conflict in what we're saying. You know, we could have the attorney come, we could have some of the MML do their facilitated things. I don't think they're in opposition, because I think there are technical discussions we can have. But then there's also, what I would say, kind of operational discussions we can have about, you know, how council communicates, you know? When requests are made, is it best practice to include all of us on it? You know, those are discussions we can have, you know, with MML to see how other communities handle that. So Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Brown.
When I voted after the training, I'll admit, I was extending an olive branch to try to see the council come together. But now, it sounds like it's being so broad that there's not a couple of topics that we need to focus in on specifically to help some of the challenges that we have faced concerning what I called, all due respect, mayor-type council, city manager-type council. And Albion is a founding member of the Michigan Municipal League. I was a regular participant of the Michigan Municipal League, going to conventions, conferences, breakout sessions. And some of the members of this council voted to stop me from going. So now I'm hearing you saying that you want to have the training that I pleaded for. And I'm a little confused, because during my tenure with the MML, I met mayors, I met council people, I met city managers, I was at Mackinac Island, Detroit, Grand Rapids. And it helped teach me how to be a councilman, it helped teach me how, I learned about Robert's Rule of Order, OMA, OMA, open meeting. We had different courses through that tenure. I would rather see us get back into that folder with some of the members who would like to pick out those classes and be members, because it's available to us. It's almost like you're bringing the MML here in a small package. But I still haven't heard anyone identify the factors that brought us here. I'm hearing a broad training, but there were some factors that got us to this point. And I would like to hear some of, you talk about the factors that got us here. And I don't think that this is an issue with Cullen at all. I mean, that's just where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I know when we started our MML training last spring, one of the issues that was brought up was the council budget. So I'm wondering for 2018, are there extra funds available for us to do ongoing? Or could we, you know, is that something we could adjust for the 2018 budget? So we have extra funds out there to support what we're trying to do, as far as? And I know we approved the budget, but what I'm basically saying is, Dr. Mitchell, if you could, in preparing the budget, think about the needs of council as far as what we're discussing with training, and try to allot funding for these types of things that we're doing. Thank you.
Start.
So what I was going to say to council, I don't know if this will in any way help you zero in on what you're trying to get to, is that when the council passed Resolution 2742, what the council agreed to was to have a future date, set up dates for, to put measures in place to, and then create this from a resolution. Create a healthy working environment, including governance, governance training, information sessions, and pathways to healing. So I don't know if that helps you kind of zero in on what you're looking for, but that was a resolution that you guys did on the 24th of November.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So the pathways to healing is huge to me, and I just don't know if that's an MML thing. Like, it seems to me we're going to have to go elsewhere from MML or an attorney. If we, I don't have the answer, I don't quite know what the answer is. But I know that that's an area that we definitely need to have someone facilitate some discussion.
I think MML offers, sorry.
Councilmember French.
I think MML offers a resolution, if I recall.
Yeah, I think, if I recall, because actually, yeah, it's somewhere buried in my email there. They do have like a catalog of trainings and facilitators. So, and that's probably one of the things that could be done. You know, ultimately, we're all adults here, so we have to kind of find a way forward. We've been elected to do this work. So I think, based on what Cullen said, and I'll go back to what Councilmember Brown just said, we have to first kind of consider the budget, that's the first thing, see how we're going to fit this in. What I would, I guess, what I would imagine happening would be something like, you know, similar to what we did at the beginning of the year. It's like a Saturday, we have a session with, I'm forgetting his name, but the attorney that you shared with us. We have those discussions, and then we can have a more, basically, like I said, it's more of a technical governance aspect. And then there's a more operational, council operational discussion about ways we can communicate better between council members, administration amongst council members, or amongst council. So I don't, this doesn't seem really complicated to me. I think I just need to know, I just need to know how much the attorney would charge that you're recommending. I did look at his, you know, his bio, he was city attorney for a number of communities. So I guess I just need cost estimates for...
Mayor?
Yes.
I had the opportunity to speak with Scott Smith today from Dickinson Wright. And he has come highly recommended, actually from MML's Board of Directors members, in that he does a lot of municipality work, especially in the area of governance. And in fact, he's working presently with Battle Creek City Council and their city manager. So he indicated that he would give us a deeply discounted rate. I don't want to say that in public, because other people might want that rate. But he is going to submit a proposal, hopefully tomorrow. I did indicate we were having some budget discussions on Monday, so you should have it in time for your consideration then. But I do agree with most of the comments here today that the needs of administration and the council are multifaceted. So it transcends governance, but it also goes into how do we have respectful relationships and open and clear communications? And that's not something you're going to find in the charter, that's relationship building. And there may be other individuals or organizations that may have, we have the ability to offer that expertise.
So what, what we can do, see, we'd have to approve that. Like, well, I guess if this question becomes the budget question then, because that would have to be, I guess, depending on whether we do it before the end of the year. Councilmember Barnes.
Okay, I know we have funding for any of us to go to the MML once council approves it comes out of our budget, the money that's set aside for us to go to the MML. I'm a little confused, so we're talking about governance, we're talking about hiring an attorney to come in to talk to us specifically about what? What is this, how, when is he going, I mean, I'm kind of confused. There's only so much. We got the charter, Robert's Rule of Order, open meeting, needing that, and the council procedure. They're not that difficult to follow. And we're going to go into the budget to tell somebody how, to tell us how, I've been here seven years. Thus, I'm not seeing where this expenditure is totally justified, but...
Councilmember, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So what I'm understanding, and maybe I'm off, I don't know. What I'm understanding is that there are some interpretation issues that we need hammered out. And to avoid putting Cullen in an awkward position, we're going to bring in Attorney Smith to discuss those things and talk through some of those interpretation issues with us as a council. And he has experience with municipalities. So that's my understanding of it. I don't, is that everybody else's understanding of? Okay, thank you.
I think, I think part of it is, actually, I don't want to drag us back into that discussion, but just be very frank, the resolution that was introduced for censure, right? Made certain allegations about overstepping, you know, oversteps of authority and those kinds of things. And so, and none of that was really kind of corroborated or kind of spelled out. But I think the idea was if, if, for example, this is a conversation I have with Councilmember French, if I, as mayor, said, hmm, I'm, you know, I'm interested in this particular concern because residents have addressed, you know, spoken to me about it. And I set up a meeting with some community stakeholders to talk about that, right? Not to, you know, guarantee a outcome, not to, you know, turn around and direct anybody to take action, but basically more of a consultative meeting with these stakeholders. And then I come back to council and say, hey, council, I think we need to, you know, take action on this or, you know, bring it to the manager's attention. Does that constitute an overstep of power or authority? So I think that's really what the, what the core of the concern is, is basically if, if, if a council member does a water main break or something in a resident's house, and you go to the manager and say, hey, can we take care of this, you know, ASAP? Is that a directive, or is that more of an elected official expressing a resident's concerns? Because it's representative democracy. So the way I interpret it, I think that's what we're getting to, is where's the line between our constituent relations responsibility and then directives when it comes to administration? Councilmember Barnes.
Okay, I want to thank you for that. That's what I'm talking about. There should be an outline with bullet points on the topics that we want to discuss. It sounds like that this council, each individual member should submit bullet point items that they want to discuss, because right now, this is so broad. Governance can go from A to Z. So we need to focus, get a focus on where we're trying to go, so we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that we can, in working with an expert that specializes in governance, share with them the concerns and issues that we've had here as a council, and things that we would like to have addressed because we've encountered them. But being that they're, they specialize, they probably, I'm sure, they could also offer, well, if you're having this issue, maybe this might be of interest to you. And we should leave that to the people who specialize in it, the experts. Because I don't know all that I need, being a newbie to council, I don't know. I would like someone to say, well, perhaps, if you're having this issue, this might be something you might want to look at or be taught or be addressed and have training on. So, yeah, I do think that we should have someone in. We can share what we feel are issues and subjects that need to be addressed, as well as they can offer suggestions for matters that haven't come up, but maybe we need to address. for matters that haven't come up, but maybe we need to address and look at before they arise, you know, so that we don't have to always be, um, you know, behind eight ball and fighting, putting out fires as they occur.
Yeah.
Have those fires not even happen, so that's fine.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do like the idea of each council member submitting specific bullet point items for discussion. Say, some may be relevant to the training with the attorneys, some may be relevant to the training with MML, but once we submit those specific items and, and sort through them, I think that would really help us focus on, um, on the issues that we need to address in our trainings. I just wanted to say that, I support that idea.
So I, I think, and we don't know, I mean, we have one price here, and I think once, um, perhaps, perhaps the council, so I'll, I'll be in, so, so I'll be safe on, on my end here. I can maybe ask council for a motion for that, but, um, basically, you know, to, to ask the manager just to, to follow up with, um, the MML president, because when, when I spoke to him, he was all in, and, and offered to put, you know, all hands on deck to, to, to help. And, uh, so, I guess the key pieces of information, we make, we need to make a decision so that we don't belabor this, basically, is timeframe for when we want to do it. Do we want to do it within this year? Do we want to do it at the beginning of next year? That's, that's one thing, and then, um, so, cost, I think that right now, um, I think we would all agree that this is worth, you know, allocating funds from wherever we can find to do, um, so I guess we can just kind of start with a timeframe, so. Councilmember French, then Councilmember Brown.
I thought she was first.
No, you had your hand up earlier.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, let me understand what you just said, Mayor, are you asking for someone to make a motion, or do you want to pick dates first?
No.
Would happily make a motion that we seek training from both Attorney Miller?
Smith.
Smith. Smith, Miller Jones, whatever. As well as the MML. And that we, um, seek to accomplish this training at everyone's soonest convenience.
Well, let me ask you this question, oh, I asked the council this question, well, well, council-
Second first, then we discuss, right?
Well, well, can you, can you, can you, oh, I was gonna have you hold the motion.
Oh, stop.
Just give me one, I'm gonna have her, uh, Councilmember Brown make her comment, I have a question, then we can do the motion.
My comment was, thank you, Mayor, um, basically, I think we need to make something happen as soon as possible. I mean, I understand the holidays are coming up, and we've had like a million meetings, I understand that, but I think this is of such importance that we need to move and act on it as quickly as possible.
So my question to you, as in forming that motion, I guess, is to say, can we do it on a, I think Saturdays would be?
Depends on the Saturday, I won't be here December, weekend December.
Well, okay, well, go ahead and make the motion, and then we can adjust it from there.
Well, I don't think we're asking for a date, because we have to consult other people first. My motion is, is that the city council, uh, will, I move that the city council go through training from the consultants we have mentioned, the MML and Mr. Jones.
Smith.
Yeah.
Smith.
Smith.
Attorney Smith, uh, that the council will submit items for interpretation or discussion to those consultants in advance of those meetings to maximize the efficiency of those meetings.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, so it's been moved in second, discussion. What we can do is basically, should we, should we amend that to say that we're gonna allocate? Is there, is there, is there a, you want to amend it?
I would, I would ask that we amend the motion, keeping in mind that our action in this area was done in response to a previous resolution that allowed us to retain the use and services of our city manager. And that understanding the cost of doing a search to replace a city manager is in the area of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. I would ask that this resolution seek to find appropriate funds to support this training. Recognizing that the cost of this training will most likely be significantly less than the amount of money we would have to spend as a city finding a replacement city manager.
Where's your point, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, it, we'll, uh, we'll vote on that, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Or discussion, I should have discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, is there further discussion regarding that? Are there's any discussion on that amendment? Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, was Councilmember French's motion to amend, what, I guess I'm not understanding, as it relates to the city manager and replacement? Can you clarify for me?
Can you make it simple?
Sure, so basically what I said was, is it, I was asking that the city manager, and we as a council approve the expenditure of funds for this training, but I put it in the context of why we should easily approve this, this funding. Because remember, we are going through this training because of difficulty we had, the resignation of our city manager, the rescinding of the resignation of our city manager because we approved the idea that we would seek training. So we, this is backing up that resolution from a month ago, um, and supporting our city manager by this training. Flap it up there, council.
No, it sounds like a point of order.
Is, is there any? Okay, is there any discussion on that? Because, just for, for clarification, I'm gonna be very direct, I, I understand what you're saying, but for a motion, maybe a resolution, it could have been that long, but like, just for the amendment, it would have probably helped for clarity to be, to be more brief, I guess, in that motion, but is there any other discussion regarding the amendment? Do you have a question? Councilmember Lawler.
Okay, um, so, are you as, what, what is it specifically that you're asking for of the city manager, of us to do for the city manager?
To find funds, sorry.
Councilmember French.
To find funds to pay for these consultants to work with us, that's it.
Okay, 'cause I heard you say something about ten thousand dollars, or?
Again, I was trying to provide some background as to why we should approve this, because...
Yeah, so, so-
Providing historical context, so I'm sorry if I confused you.
Okay. So, to clarify, basically, Councilmember French has said, because when we usually do candidate searches, it could range anywhere from around like ten thousand dollars to, to replace. But, but the heart of the motion basically is that we're going to authorize the expenditure, whatever it is, to pay for these trainings. That's, that's the core. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, a voice vote, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
I would-
Huh? Okay.
If I'm out of order, I apologize, but because we're talking money, I think I would do-
Okay, you're right.
The voice.
Okay, we'll do that. Clerk Domingo, if you call the role on the, this is to the motion to, uh, to amend the main motion, this is relative to just making, authorizing the allocation of funding for this.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, uh, so we're back to the main motion that has been amended to include authorization from council to pay, um, the, I guess, the, the costs of these things, and I guess once they come back, we probably can, if we need, if need be, approve specific numbers. Are there any other, uh, any other amendments to the motion that we need to discuss? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to approve specific numbers, just for the formality of it, once they come in. I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine with the motion that's on the floor right now, but once we get specific numbers, um, I would like to approve specific numbers.
Okay. Okay, that, that works, I mean, we can-
I don't think that's, um, I don't think that needs to be part of this amendment, right?
Well, it could be a separate amendment, but I'm just saying.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
But, I mean, to be safe, we can do it, just so that, it's council speaking, so, is that an amendment to that?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? This amendment basically just instructs, um, I guess the managers, once the numbers do come in, um, that we'll have an opportunity to approve specific numbers. If there's no further discussion, uh, probably do that voice vote, that's not money per se. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, so we basically have a main motion that authorizes, I guess, contracting with Attorney Smith, I almost said Miller, and, uh, the MML to facilitate governance and, uh, kind of this capacity building here for the council, and then there are two amendments to that. One is to authorize expenditures for it, and then the other is to make sure that the council will approve, uh, specific numbers once we have those. If there are no further, if there's no further discussion or amendments, we can do a roll call on that.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, item B is discussion of code enforcement options.
Um, council, if I might, would it be possible to take these out of order, because I know representatives from police and Vanderbrink are here, and they have quite a ways to go. If we could take C.
Okay, is, uh, is there a motion to, uh, to flip B and C?
So moved.
Second.
Moved. Wait, this is the very question I called, on the line. Moved in seconded, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, okay, they are flipped. Uh, we are, the new item B is request approval, Resolution number twenty-seventeen dash forty-seven, a resolution to approve additional wastewater treatment plan improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
Alan Miguel Delos here, as well as Director of Public Services.
Good evening, council. The reason we're back is we're having de-watering issues. Unfortunately, the water below the ground, we have no control over. Being at the wastewater plant, we're used to dealing with finite amounts that are contained within tanks. We know what goes in, we know potentially what's going out, unfortunately, we don't have that control of groundwater. We have made an earnest attempt at getting the groundwater to a level where we can enter the tanks and get the work done on the ground. Unfortunately, we have not achieved that. So I'm here tonight to ask that you approve Resolution twenty-seventeen forty-seven to help us move forward with a little additional funding. And what that'll equate to is some additional pump units brought in, um, we're gonna drill some larger well points put in to help facilitate that groundwater removal.
Councilmember French.
Have you demonstrated progress, in other words, that the system does lower it, just not sufficiently, or is it not lowering it at all? And so we, as it were, throwing more money after a problem, we don't see a solution.
I'm gonna give this to Alan here in a second, but let me just add this, since the project, the de-watering project just began, we record water, rainwater at the wastewater plant every day for the National Weather Service. We've had over thirteen, about thirteen and a quarter inches of rain, so you get that influx of all the collection of the wetlands around it into the groundwater table. So it's been a, it's been an issue for us, but I'll let Alan go a little farther.
Yeah, your, your question is, are they, are they making progress, and I'm, I'm with the engineer, Larry Lynn here is from Franklin, Alberta. He's the contractor, he's, he's got the task of actually putting in the wells and, and making sure the water's being de-watered. So what we can, what I can say is, they, they take measurements from the different well points that are around the clarifiers, and you, you see the pictures of the, uh, clarifier and, and the wastewater treatment plant, you can see what's going on, there, there's a lot of well points in there. And, uh, they've made progress to, to drop the, the level, um, about five feet on one side and ten feet on the other. So they're, they're making progress, the, the problem is, there's still a potential for a large storm, like Jim just said, to come, and, and it needs to be lower for there to be, um, greater, less risk for anything to happen to the clarifier. So that's why we need to drill deeper wells and, and put on more pumps to, to write that down, and, and we're close.
So I think, I think council, I think council authorized ninety thousand originally, how much of that has been, I guess, expended so far?
Well, at, at this point in time, that initial, I think it was eighty-seven thousand, even over there, sorry, no, it's close enough. The system itself was set to install about a hundred and fifty inch and a half well points, down to a depth of eighteen to twenty feet. Most of those well points, we were only able to get down ten, twelve, thirteen feet. Well point is about three feet high, so then you're only drawing down seven, eight feet from the surface. We need to get down to about twelve feet below the surface. So we're not quite there through a lot of effort, we've added points, we've added, I've put a lot of effort in to get points deeper, but it's a, it's what we call a well point vacuum system, so we use a vacuum pump. It's generally the most, least expensive way to draw the water down to a workable level in shallow wells, or shallow water situations, which we are. We only need to get down, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet. Problem is, we couldn't get the well points down deep enough, generally speaking, because of all the structure that we was running into, uh, trying to jet, water jet these points in. Now, when you water jet a point, it goes down usually fairly easy and fairly quickly, and you, that water comes down, it forces silt and water back out, and you get, you put your point in. What we're having trouble, when you get down to twelve feet, and you start running into rock and, and log matter and wood matter, is now you create a whole lot of pressure in that hole, and you start to disturb earth on a horizontal level.
Like, almost like fracking.
Yeah, what, what we're fracking would be the sidewalls of tanks and stuff, we don't want to, so, we're, we're very concerned about any potential under- so that's why at this point, after all the effort we've put in to put more wells in to get down to eighteen feet, we've come to, and we've battled and battled and battled, and we've got one, you know, we were trying to get into the north tank for the last six weeks. And it's been a struggle, it's been a struggle, and it's been a struggle, and you're asking how much money have we spent on that eighty-seven already? That program was set as a nine-week rental of all this de-watering equipment. We've got the month of October into it, we've got two weeks of November into it, we haven't got in the first tank yet. Which means we are going to be another nine weeks, if we get into the tank tomorrow, for another nine weeks. So we're gonna overconsume, in reference to spending money for that eighty-seven thousand dollars, that I'm not requesting. At this point in time, we're gonna do our best to survive with that eighty-seven thousand dollars. What we are asking here right now is, we are bringing another contractor in to assist our present contractor that doesn't have drilling rigs, he basically is just a water jet vacuum pump system, which is, which is what both contractors that we had proposed for this particular application, which was, you know, the right way to go, and unfortunately, you never know what kind of ground you're running into, and especially around construct, you know, old construction sites, not knowing what kind of fill is used. So we're bringing, we want to bring in Duwin to drill in three six-inch wells, you know, drill rig, to get down to twenty, twenty-five feet to work a certain zone between the two tanks that we're really having trouble getting our water down. And then, on the south side of the south tank, we have several zones where we only have scattered well points that are deep enough, and then areas that are a bunch of shallow points. We want to then drill in those areas borings, and then pull existing well points, drop them in there to a deeper level so we can get a, a better uniform draw around the entire- so we can get a better uniform draw around the entire tank. Right now, what we've been fighting through all this rain, if we get the northwest and northeast side of the North Tank down to thirteen feet, we're golden. But we get around to that South Tank, and there's just like a flowing river between these two tanks, we can get that down to about seven, eight feet, and that's just a matter of what we've done. That's where we've stopped. And we need to be, we need to be three, four feet deeper.
Okay.
And if we have another storm front, and we don't have a little bit of room there, we're getting back out at the tank and having to fill the thing back up. We're running risk of structural damage, and that's a very, very costly situation.
Councilmember Barnes?
And this was created by an act of nature, right?
Um, in, in many ways. I mean, we've been fighting water, rain, and we're also fighting what we can't see down below. And we're working in the dark in many regards.
Excuse me, an act of nature is really creating a tough situation for you? The bigger picture is, this is absolutely necessary for us to get our tanks up and running, right?
It absolutely is. We can, we cannot get in the tank.
Okay, and Franklin Howard will be coming in to help you?
I'm Franklin Howard Company, project manager.
I'm from Grand Rapids. Yeah, we love your company. So I'm gonna make, I'll make a motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, mayor. So the company that's coming in to do the actual drill work is DeWinn, correct?
That would be DeWinn Water, yes.
So my question is, um, did you, did you, how did you, how did you choose them? Did you bid out for them? Did you, 'cause I'm, and I don't know, so I'm...
On the original basis, DeWinn and Xylem Godwin Pump were the two contractors that provided bids for the vacuum well point system. We chose Godwin Pump because of the competitive bid nature to do the work. They only provide the vacuum water jet well point systems. Wynn does deep wells, water jet systems, and other types of de-watering. They've got a much more equipment base. So we've brought them in as a, as an assistant to our original contractor. It's basically a two-day process. They would drill the six holes, they, they're basically on call, understanding that we're gonna be here trying to get this approved. I'm hoping to have them on-site next week, Monday, Monday to Tuesday. I'll be calling them on my way out of here, one way or another. But it's basically a two-day process to get our six wells in and another dozen boreings, so we can relocate our inch and a half wells into those boreings.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, mayor, just one more question. So you've done work with DeWinn in the past?
Yes.
So you're familiar with, thank you.
And I, I went to our other contractor, and I said, get ahold of Kelly, DeWatering or DeWinn Watering, have them come in, look the situation over, and offer some suggestions where, what we can do to try to get us to that level. And with obviously cost being, you know, pointed it in a cost-effective manner. And so this is, you know, we're looking at another seventeen thousand dollars to accomplish what we got accomplished, and I am, at this point, very hopeful that within, hopefully, by the end of this next week, we will, we'll know where we're at.
Uh, councilmember Spicer, councilmember Barnes?
Thank you, mayor. So at this point, we have authorized and approved eighty-seven thousand dollars? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, and now we are being requested for seventeen thousand. And I certainly can only understand and comprehend a bit of what you've just talked about. However, I, I, I'm wondering, you, you probably cannot give us any assurance that this will solve the problem, it'll get the tanks in. You may be coming back to us at some point if you encounter...
In, in de-watering, there is never a guarantee. So I am very hopeful, and based on the meeting I had with DeWinn, and what we're proposing, and what we have experienced with all the stuff that we've tried, I'm, I feel confident that we're gonna, that we're gonna be able to get there.
And at...
Oh, go ahead, Mel.
Just one additional comment. At this point, I know that there, we have to move forward, and you need the money to complete this project, and there's no way. I'm sure we're not going to approve that, but I just wanted to ask that question, so, thank you.
Councilmember Barnes?
Based on the work that I know that Franklin Howard Company's done in Grand Rapids, uh, Godwin Plumbing and Godwin Pumping, and Grand Rapids, and Vando, Marina and everything. I wanna make a motion to approve additional wastewater treatment plan improvements. Resolution 2017-47.
Just one, one point of order, there's always been, there's already been a motion made to approve that, yeah.
I'm sorry.
So the, the question that I have, it seems to me, is that, you know, in the, we're kind of going back and forth between kind of two constraints. One is the constraint to kind of keep costs down. So I'm sure the, the method that we settled on to, to do this, like you were saying, is, was, you know, it's, it works, but, you know, it's, if we had wanted to make sure it worked, we could have just went with, you know, a straight, you know, well in the first place.
Well, the drilling operations are much more expensive.
Yes.
The water jet system is by far the most cost-effective, generally speaking, when you're dealing with shallow water tables. Unfortunately, you know, we ran into a lot of stuff in that ground that nobody was expecting.
Okay. And then, the, I guess this is the follow-up question to that, and then...
Privilege for this.
Oh, yes, okay. The follow-up question then is, is, probably every project's different, but is this something that's, that commonly happens? Or is, could it have been anticipated, or? A similar to a question I asked last time.
I think I'll say with, with de-watering type projects, every project is different. You don't know what you're gonna get to in the ground. And what, you know, there were proj, there was a project back in early two thousand at another part of the plant where they had to de-water, and they used this, this method. Another contractor, not FHC, used this method of, of de-watering around the erosion tank. And it was partially successful, is, is what we hear from the, from the staff that was around then. So we had some confidence that this would work, but what we're running into here is the hard stuff, the debris, or it's something that was left possibly when they constructed the plant, that they're running into, that they can't get their water jetting, they can't get their well points going on.
Okay. Are there any other questions, concerns? Thank you all. Oh, I, I do have one, so, um, the additional funding, which fund?
Oh, the sewer fund.
Okay. Seeing no further, thank you all, no further...
If I can make...
Yes, absolutely.
Just to give you a little appreciation. We obviously had a lot of dry weather in September, and, you know, in early October. Unfortunately, you know, we didn't get our equipment in until the end of September, so we couldn't start de-watering until we knew that was gonna happen, and we had all this rain. Our original project schedule, we were gonna be in and out of these two tanks and done and completed before Thanksgiving. You know, now we're, you know, we'll be working through December and probably January, and it's some, some, you know, not so fun weather. So, you know, believe me, we're, we've been doing everything we possibly can to getting these tanks, this, this, every week is just gonna make it more difficult for us.
And that just, one question I have, just a follow-up to that, is, does the cold weather affect the drilling operation?
Not as long as we keep pumping water.
Okay.
Not gonna affect the drilling, it'd affect the, you know, the snowstorm or, or severe cold. They're working outside.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, there might be days where you've...
I don't know how hard these guys are.
Cover things up, or you don't work, 'cause it's too cold living.
Okay.
We install things throughout the winter, it's just, you know, it's a, normally you, you plan for winter conditions, when you know we're gonna do it in the winter. Here, you're figuring out October, November, you mean, and then being home, so. It's, it's, it's just gonna get rougher, and we're gonna keep plodding forward, so.
Thank you all. Seeing, seeing no further discussion from council, and there's a, a motion and a second, we'll move on to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed? Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item C, discussion, code enforcement options. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Code enforcement options, I know that this has been something that has, has, that's been brought to my attention. I know that I've spoken with a number of councilmembers about it, about what we can do to increase capacity relative to that function of the city, and, you know, what we can do in the budget. So what, I'll, I'll let the manager start us off, and then we can have a, a discussion about it, so.
Well, mayor and council, I do want to invite up John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement, but just as an overview, there have been concerns expressed relative to the ability of our staff to address all of the needs and demands relative to those operations, and in particular, code enforcement. So, um, it was my understanding that some years ago, there were seven or more staff people who operated relative to planning, code enforcement, and zoning. So now we have a staff of one. So some of the constraints relative to our ability to address many of the issues that are going on within our community is simply a limitation of the resources, and there's only one individual. So John has prepared a summary of some of the details to outline the work that he is doing himself at the present time. And there's some other component parts to all of this, and one of those is, as we are identifying abandoned and blighted properties, if we try to go towards citation and we should prevail in court, we don't have the funding designated to address those properties. So if that is a resolution that also requires additional funding, so that's something that you would have to take into consideration. But relative to the staffing, first I want to, I shared with you a document that outlines the proposal for two part-time positions. One being administrative support. There is a lot of paperwork associated with whatever has to happen. And if you look at the detailed documents that Mr. Tracy has provided you, he has had to provide his own staff support in terms of getting the mailings out, posting and everything else, addressing the calls of citizens who come in, issuing all the permits. The other one would be an assistant code enforcement position. We're recommending those be in the area of fifteen dollars an hour in part-time. And I did hear the concern expressed by the representative from the union. And I do want to point out, he is correct that in their union agreement, and many of our agreements, it says that we cannot hire permanent part-time individuals. So what is being proposed is actually a temporary part-time, and in their contract on page twenty-one, it indicates that an employee who is hired to work less than forty hours per week for a specific period or project, such, such a person shall only be eligible for those fringe benefits mandated by law. Then it also goes on within their contract to indicate that a regular employee shall also include permanent part-time employees working at least eighty hours, regularly scheduled hours per month, at least ten months in any year. We are not proposing that the individual would work more than ten months. So in that sense, I think we would be in compliance with their contract language in that they would not be permanent part-time. Our anticipation would be that with additional revenue generating opportunities in place, one, if we do go ahead with the rental registration, that will generate some funding, looking at revenues that could be generated relative to the marijuana, medicinal marijuana facilities, as well as other initiatives. If we are issuing citations, there's going to be some, some minor revenues generated from that. So our anticipation and projection would be that in time, those positions would be self-supporting and then could become full-time. But in order to get it started up, we do need to start with part-time. And if we were to look at a full-time position, essentially, on that cost for the salary would be thirty-one thousand two hundred, and for the benefit package, that's another twenty-five, almost twenty-six. And then we, I don't think that includes the, the health, health savings reimbursement, which would be two to four thousand, depending upon if they're a family of, a family or not. So we're talking at approximately sixty thousand for one position, if it were to be full-time with benefits. So this would maximize our opportunity to have more resources in terms of the support staff for code enforcement by having two part-time people to support those operations. And John, I don't know if you wanna go into some of the details of what's actually involved in the work.
So one, 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 one thing, just to modify, could you, I know that councilmembers are probably familiar with what, you know, the different functions that you do. I know that this is, you know, televised and recorded. Could you, could you go over, because like in the, in the documents you give us, there's code enforcement stuff, there's zoning stuff, there are, you know, other things. So can you give us just a brief, or like a citizen's, a brief summary of the functions that you're responsible for?
Okay. John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. To begin with, planning takes in quite a large chunk. Anything that comes into the city, whether it be a business, restaurant, industrial, even residential, goes through zoning. What size, how big, what it is, where it can go, where it can't go. And so on, and so on. Land division, land combination. So anything that happens, bottom line. New business, old business that moves into another location. The site plans, whether it be a minor site plan or a major site plan, anything that's primarily under ten acres, or, or not ten acres, ten thousand square feet, and under two and a half acres winds up going through administratively through my office from the site plan on through. If it's over that, it goes in front of the planning commission. I still do a pre-run through on all site plans and all that information, and then wind up making recommendations to the planning commission, and then they can take that for what it's worth, and go from there. When planning commission's done with a site plan, or if there's a special use, such as a hotel, there's a special use downtown. When they make their decision, I'm the one that follows up on the remainder of that, too. So if there's conditions or changes to be, be made, it runs through my office. Basically, anything that's done as far as accessory structures, garages, sheds, fences, parking lots, there again, it's all, all, all under planning and zoning. So it keeps you pretty busy, especially right now. We're, we're busier right now than I've seen a city in nineteen years that I've been here. When I originally started here, you had six full-time and one part-time person between zoning, planning, and building. In two thousand and three, we outsourced the one job that was building inspector. Electrical, mechanical, and plumbing was always outsourced before that. Bottom line is, is with building, we still have as a, as a convenience to both residents and contractors, we take applications through my office. Probably a good eighty percent, if not more, come through the office. And I'll go down through some of these papers, just so you get a quick idea, so. I also oversee site built as far as any problems we may have, or in following up on rental properties we have problems with, or other, other buildings, so. And along with this, I work with Calhoun County, Treasury Department, Calhoun County Land Bank. The properties that you see taken down, you work with them on which ones, and how to take them down, and help coordinate inspections on them. You work with them on which ones and how to take them down and help coordinate inspections on them. Same thing with any industrial or commercial buildings that are coming down or have come down, properties, just like the clearing of the block for the hotel downtown. That all went through our office. So, it's, it's quite a busy time right now. The building part, of course, we have the building, whether it's trades or, or building itself, electrical, mechanical, plumbing. As we go down through, you'll see where we're at this year. Those will keep increasing, the numbers that we have. As we're going into two thousand and eighteen, we're looking at a lot of changes, a lot of potential changes that will eat up even more time on planning. Along with the planning, I meet periodically with investors who come into the city, wanting to know what they can do, where they can do it. We have a very good working relationship with EDC now. We have a person that's on EDC staff that is very outgoing and trying to do a lot of things for this community. And we work quite a bit together on what, where, again. We have the G I S, G I S system, which right now is, has the sewer and water, or sewer and stormwater on it. That system will progressively become more of a tool that's of use for all utilities that we have in the city. And one of the big major things of that is, is knowing what we have where. So when a company comes in and wants to know if we have a site for them, we can tell them right then, rather than wait in a week or two. And when you typically do that, they move on to the next spot. Companies don't like to wait for answers. If you have the answers right up front, you're more apt to, to get things done. The dialysis center is a good example. If we didn't run that through in the timeframe we wanted, or that they wanted, it would not have been here in Elvia, it would have been in Marshall. Same thing with Taco Bell and a few others. So, time is of the essence when it comes to planning and zoning, also in building. Code enforcement deals with doxious vegetation, waste, property maintenance, whether your house is in disrepair or falling down, or it's a rental property. And I'll show you a little example of what we run into as, as we go down through the papers. So that's, it's kind of a, just a brief little part. We do a lot of work for city properties too. Run across, a good, good example is twenty-nine alleyways that were vacated in nineteen sixty-eight. Not all of them were vacated. So we're finishing up on some of the stuff the city started ten, twenty, thirty years ago. Never finished though. If you go look down through this packet, and I'll go through this quite quickly. The guide to development's just kind of an idea of what planning starts out with. You don't have to go through it. The first log, there's a zoning log. Right now, there's seventy-two applications that gone through there and we've got about fifteen more waiting to go on to that, so. The order to abate log, we're at a hundred and seventy plus. We're actually written up citations on properties, whether it be trash, grass, unlawful dumping. The next log you have is.
So for example, the zoning log, you, you'll receive the application and then you go out?
Correct.
Okay.
Everything has to, when, when an application comes in, to begin with, quite often you wind up working with an individual at some point, explaining what needs to be done. You go out to the site, you document the site. Of course, you have to check, make sure setbacks and/or what they want to do is even permitted in its own area. Document that has been done and so on. And it's quite often winds up even working with the city assessor, making sure that the property is there that's supposed to be there, so. The next one there, planning, building, code enforcement. This is a worksheet, or spreadsheet that I use with properties that I work in conjunction, both what I start out, what I run across with problems. And then if I have to send it out to, for example, SafeBuild to follow up on inspections, because bottom line is not the time to follow up on these. We're looking at, right now, we're at over a hundred of these alone. Some of these are also where we send over abandoned vehicles, public safety and such too. Next paper is just a, commercial permits. Just giving you an idea of how many permits we've had come through here as of October first, or eighth, I think it is. And we still have probably another couple hundred, at least, before the year's, before the year's done. You have commercial building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing.
So, so is, SafeBuild is formally, or was formerly?
SafeBuild, SafeBuild performs, but these, majority of these applications come through my office.
Okay. So then what, what do you?
We write the billing up for them. We make sure that we get the information for SafeBuild on the property. If it can be done on the property. And then SafeBuild quite often, if we have problems, they'll get back with me to resolve what we need to.
Okay, but for these, they, they actually will?
They're the ones that do the follow-up on it. Residential permits, there again, you have building, mechanical, plumbing and electrical in there. As we're going down through, one of them you have there is, it actually doesn't have a title on it, but it's citations that have to be written for non-compliance with, with trash pickup. So it just gives you a little bit of more of an idea what.
It's the one that says credit hold, right?
So you're right around a hundred citations. Citations, when they're written in code enforcement dealing with properties, it's different than writing a parking ticket or a speeding ticket. Have to both post and mail, document your properties. You go back out and document properties further down the line, if there's any compliance, if there isn't compliance, and so on and so on and so forth. So, the next one is just an example of the city streets. That's a list of properties they have problems with, with people putting leaves out or unlawful dumping, so. The sheet that's folded over, the, if you open that up, these are properties and none of these properties include any of Calhoun County Land Bank or Treasurer properties. Not a one of those that's on this sheet, this is separate. So we're at roughly somewhere growing up around seventy-some properties. These are properties that have been cited in some manner or another. Some of them have to be demoed, some of them can be rehabbed. And some will probably wind up going back to county, because we have vacant.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So these are properties where we've not only addressed, we've cited, but as we try to move forward, forward with them, it's not the easiest thing because you do need money to get things done.
So, so basically the folded sheet are buildings, if we were just flush with cash?
These are, these are, these are, these are properties that have problems. Like I said, not a one of these is any of those that are included with Calhoun County properties. Calhoun County Land Bank has over a hundred properties in the city right now. None of those are on this list, I did not include those. The next list there is basically work orders that have been written up for contractors. We're kind of light on that this year because we just haven't had the time, nor have I had the staff to address more. Typically, code enforcement will have around three to four hundred citations a year just on grass and solid waste. And typically, in a year's time, we wind up with about eighty, eighty-five to ninety abatements. We're at about forty right this, this time of year, so. The next sheet there is just a brief overview of if you want to or decide to go to rental certification and registration. In working with Tom Scott of the assessing office, we tried to come up with somewhat of a approximate, not totally accurate, idea of what we have for rental properties in the city. And with doing some deductions off some to make sure that we didn't have a high number, we're looking at a little over nine hundred properties that have dwellings on them, that are potential rental. That does not include if the property has multi-units in it. There can be anywhere from a single-family home to a home that has, some of them have up to eight and nine apartments. And then you also have your apartment complexes such as on Watson Street, the Housing Commission. And this does not count any of the properties that the college have with their dorms and such. Under the rental certification, that was the ordinance that was written, it would address all rental, including college properties.
I know that there were discussions with, I guess I want to say like the Landlords Association, Mr. Guyer, and I know there were some, some technicalities that they were concerned about, but it seemed like they were.
Well, I think one of the things, well, one of the things that was mentioned to me to begin with is my understanding from what they conveyed is that they're afraid that we might become like Jackson. Evidently in Jackson, and I, I don't know this for a fact, but evidently in Jackson, they write landlords up for. They write landlords up for even cracks in the siding, so, which, that's up to them. The rental certification ordinance that was written is based off of what's required by the, minimal requirements by the state under the reference two thousand and fifteen International Property Maintenance Code. I know some would like to see us go with a section eight inspection, but.
Yeah, I think that was.
Right. But inspection eight does not cover the full minimum of what the state requires, which turns around saying if something happens that we don't inspect for, that will be referenced to by the state, then we are looking at liability. So, I mean, you can do, we can go any way you want to, but bottom line, as you've seen in other states and heard of, building departments being sued or prosecuted because something wasn't followed.
Do you, do you foresee, and this is, it's a slightly different topic, but with, with that, I wonder, do you, if we were to, to do this, do you foresee people, someone saying, well, I'm just, I'm just not going to be in the.
Well, I tell you what, if you look at the next paper right after that, this basically is about one, two, three, four pages long. This is not the most extreme, nor is this the least of an apartment. This is one apartment. We had a complaint on it, went in, and you have this right up on it, including determining that the property is extremely hazardous for the occupant even to be there because of electrical. So, take it for what it's worth. This, three days ago, I even had a call from Adult Protective Services because they have someone that's living in an apartment that has no heat. The landlord has not taken care of it. So you're got, you're going from a small area of no heat on up to something of this nature that they're suggesting nobody should be living here, period, until everything's addressed, so. Run across it all. We've run across rentals that have feces floating around in the basement. Rentals that have furnaces that don't work. This particular, particular rental doesn't even have fire smoke detectors that work in it. Then you have landlords that are extremely good. There's a number of landlords in, in the town here that I've never had a problem with. But you also have landlords that you do have problems with. We do get a number, high number of calls every year just from occupants that have numerous problems. Having in places that had several areas where you could count, not just a few, but several hundred cockroaches that were dead in the corner and even being in a thermostat that you look at, so. It can be from a perfectly kept up apartment to apartments that wind up getting to the part or, or to the extent of they wind up being sucked dry to money and they let them go to the land bank. Most of these houses you see coming down were rentals at one time. So, whether it be multiple rental or a single-family rental, that's what the bulk of those are. And then, of course, last pa, paper there is just kind of a overview what a part-time or part-time, full-time, whichever you want to say it or go with, what their duties would be as far as a code enforcement officer. If you have any questions?
So there is a, a three-page documents, it's like planning, zoning, and then it has, is this, this?
Yeah, that's, that's part of what I do.
Okay. So, basically what we would be doing, and, and just for, I guess, from my perspective, from what I've heard from residents, and basically, I know there's a, you know, a gentleman who lives on Second Street, who's come before us a number of times, is a gentleman who lives on.
Berrien.
Berrien, yeah, I mean, the more vocal ones, you know. But I think the, the core of the concerns are basically about, you know, if someone has made an investment in their property, you know, they've maintained their landscaping, they take care of their house, they make new additions of siding and whatnot. And then you have basically either, you know, basically a property next to them that's either privately held, or even in some cases like city property. And they're concerned about, you know, if I've committed to, you know, doing the right thing and making that investment, that this other person has potentially kind of lowered my property value.
Right. And unfortunately, at this time and point, we just don't have the time to address all of it.
Yeah. And so I think that's really what, because, you know, my proposal originally, like I said, this is kind of a discussion for council. One of the things that I had thought about, I know that in some communities, you know, the, you know, the police do code enforcement. I know that the, the chief provided me with an explanation of why that might not be the best here. You know, out of the public safety, and so we have a combined, basically all our police officers are also firefighters. But I, I think really the question for me, and you can kind of provide a explanation for that, is if, if someone lives in a house and their neighbor, the next-door neighbor, just does not maintain their property, there's, you know, they, they don't, you know, they're not following the single hauler thing, or there's all kinds of problems. And that's relayed to you. Like what, what's the process that you would follow to, let's say?
Well, the bottom line is, at this point in time, it's hard to, I've always tried, let's back up a little bit, I've always tried to set certain days for certain things to be able to go through and take care of. Unfortunately, at this point in time, with both the number of individuals that are inquiring about doing commercial in the city, with the changes that are happening with zoning and a rewrite, and the building and such. When I come in in the morning, I can have a full day planned. I'm lucky to get a half an hour in of what was planned. Because of being contacted, either people coming in with permits, people coming in deciding they want to do a zoning permit, put a fence. they want to do a zoning permit, put up fence, shed, additions, contractors coming in, dealing with commercial properties that if you've noticed, there's quite a bit of cleanup going on in some of the areas. You even have some of them that said they would never change, but they have been changing. So it creates a problem. I, I feel bad about it, but I also have a wife I need to go home at night to, and quite often that's nine or ten o'clock at night. Yesterday I was in here at six-thirty in the morning, so I could leave at four o'clock to go see my granddaughter, inducted into a special day, no lunch, ten-hour days to twelve-hour days, it's not anything unusual. And you, and there's no way you can keep up with it all.
So, and like I said, this is, this is just for understanding for my, so basically, I keep calling it cornerstone, I know they're not cornerstone, but so they, what they do is they go out for, I know they're doing like new construction and, and those kinds of things, and, and if, and if we, let's say we, the council approved a rental certification, would they be doing that as well?
If that's the council that, if that's the direction the council would go.
Okay.
Right now, just to give you an idea, Safe Belt does rental certification for Three Rivers. Okay. Three Rivers, of course, they do the in-house for the registration, and they also keep track of the certifications on rentals, okay? They do pay a straight fee for whether it's, no, no matter how many units, it's the same cost per unit for Safe Belt to go through. On their rental certification, they do a bi-annual inspection every other year. The city could do every other year, the city could do every three years, what council whatever want, want to come to the conclusion on. The registration is yearly, they, over there, they charge twenty-five dollars per unit. Here we're looking at charging twenty-five dollars per parcel, whether it was one or twenty on it. So that the owner could fill it out, and it wouldn't be such, it wouldn't be such a cost to be absorbed. So, one of the things, my understanding is, is that in Three Rivers, they've come quite a, quite a ways with their rental and their housing stock. So, you know, and that's another part of, when you have industry coming in, when you have businesses coming in, or if you have people that want to use this as their spot to live at, whether it's in a rental or putting a house up, having pride of ownership, or moving because their neighbors don't keep anything up. Bottom line, whether it's rental or other, it makes a difference. If you look back before two thousand eight, when the housing took a left turn, we had a lot of rehab going on, we had a lot of areas that were cleaned up. When I first started here in ninety-eight, I could go down in areas and not see the next block over because of brush, junk. Used to have my contractors coming back in with replacing tires once or twice a week. So, so it's, it's been a long haul, and we've, we've gone a long ways, and so.
So to, to move us along, I guess, like I said, I'm going to go down through this three-page thing, so basically planning and zoning, that's just basically all falling on you, and any kind of paperwork that's falling on you. And then you do basically staff support for.
The number.
Yeah, the, the three boards there, and then.
Which I think Cheryl can attest to.
Yeah. And so then, code enforcement, that's where we're, you know, some of the council members have expressed concern for enhancing that. And then, when it comes to more the building things, that's just basically, you're doing the initial paperwork.
I'm doing, I'm doing the paperwork, getting it over to them, making sure that they get it, that it's paid for here downstairs.
Okay.
That they have the information on the properties that go with it, because if you go on a web site, unfortunately, there's a lot of information on there, but it's not real time.
Okay.
If you go into the assessing to find out information on properties, quite often that's not updated frequently, so.
Okay.
I have to go, I go on through our own BSNA system.
Okay. So, so basically with the assistant, a code enforcement officer, they're going to go, I guess on whatever schedule, and, you know, be looking out for basically violations. But then, let's say they, so it's the scenario I was saying, like, you know, your neighbor, my neighbor is way out of code, and they go and they, you know, they, there's a notice, and they go through that whole process. Does, does, does the additional staff help us deal with the, because the concern that resident kind of voiced to me was that there's a, a point at which, for example, with like a derelict building, if we go all the way to court and the judgment's in our favor, the city has to pay for that.
Yes.
So.
Well, depending whether the person takes care of it after the court.
Okay.
And if the person does not, then we take care of it, and it goes as a lien under property.
Okay. So what, what's that scenario in a code enforcement? So if I, if I basically, the, the structure of the home is not at the code, and then the, like I said, the yard is not at the code, and there's, they're not.
Yards, yards typically we can address, every now and then we run across somebody that'll need man that are contractors, get off the yard, and I'm not going to have a contractor be confronted. At that point in time, we look for the court system.
Okay.
But typically, when it's a yard, we can get it cleaned up. There is a process, of course, we're given notice, it's posted, it's mailed, go back out, time, when the time comes to document whether it's done or not, if it's not done, then I come back in and get a contractor signed up to go and do it, they go out, clean it up, I go back out, re-document it. I get their bill back, run that through on a request for invoice, but down the amount per council resolution, the cost, ten percent amount of surta fee, and then that winds up going down to accounting, so.
So do we usually recoup that?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. If it's a property, for example, like a lot of these rentals, I went through them, are being destroyed, we don't recoup. If we could go after assets, that would be great. We've only done that once with a fire property that didn't have insurance on it, and the city attorney at the time had gone after five other properties that they had, put liens on them, the individual paid and took the, took the building down.
So if, if, I guess, if any of us had to go and, I guess, say, sell it back to residents and say, okay, we've approved these extra positions, what can we say that residents can expect to see different?
What they can see to be different to begin with is solid waste and vegetation.
Okay.
Okay. That's, that's right off the top.
Okay. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. John, I have a, well, question, I don't know if I can answer it, but do we have any idea, do we have a total or approximation of the revenues that have been garnered, harvested to date for two thousand and seventeen with regard to citations, code violations?
Citations is a hard one to figure on. Once I send it downstairs, I don't get those figures back up from accounting. Now, as far as on the building permits and such, that's pretty easy to follow what the city gets, because it's ten percent of what it is, so if they do seventy thousand dollars in permits, it's seven thousand dollars that the city gets back on you.
But there is a total available for the code violation that you said goes to accounting? We can get that figured out.
I have, I have, anything that I send down to accounting, I have a, I keep a record, I keep record of it, what goes down, now what's paid back to accounting, or through that I do not have.
No, I was, Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just thinking, running through my mind, that I don't know how, how much monies, funds are collected, but, and I don't know what those funds are earmarked for, but that might be, you know, it's a possibility to pay, depending on what's collected, just a thought, so.
Yeah, that, that would be through accounting that we could get that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do keep a running spreadsheet on everything that is spent out of my department, whether it's our planning, building, or code enforcement. Anything that comes through, goes through, I have it running, I don't wait for quarterly reports on or a map.
So, so basically just, and I'm trying to expedite it because we, we have closed session, and this is, this is just discussion, but so solid waste, so basically kind of the noxious vegetation stuff, what, what else could be?
Well, a code enforcement officer out in the field can also address things such as fences. If it's a deteriorating house, they can report it if it's something that needs to be, bottom line, if it comes down to where it's going to go to quarters, something, it's probably going to be me that's going to wind up going that route. Having somebody that can go out and take care of things on a daily basis and/or to get them initiated makes a big difference.
Because part of, like I said, I don't know the code in depth, but I would think that there's like, you know, there's probably some notice, and there's probably some required buffer time between the first notice and the second notice, so, you know, hiring someone else is not going to speed that up because that's a built-in process, but like do other times when the second notice lags?
Typically, typically, there's, the only time there's really first, second notices is when it comes to vegetation, okay? Anything else, it's one notice sent out, one posting, one mailing. Typically, when I had the time to do it more, I always carried a laptop inside my truck with a printer, so I could do it right there. But I also had access to the assessing database, because you have to use that for your property owners, and/or if it's a land contract and you want to go ahead and make sure you have everybody included, because quite often those properties go back to someone who sold them on a land contract. If you don't give everybody notice, then you run across problems getting money back.
Councilmember Barnes.
I would ask, once we move beyond discussion to a question in the future, that this council supports the code enforcement office. It is long overdue, and it's been known that we're, you know, in the last ten years, we've been down fifty percent of our manpower, but yet the labor stayed the same as far as maintenance. Our city is evident by the illegal dumping that we have experienced, and the abatements that we see around town, and there's so much to be done with a progressive city like this, and I think that we should have the code enforcement place department intact. I would look forward to hiring two part-time people, based on the city manager looking through the contract, saying it's legal, and that would be part of the discussion that I wanted to have tonight. Thank you.
If you look back at five years ago, four years ago, the number of violations that were written up, as I say, we're looking at the three to four hundred mark. We're at a hundred and seventy-five right now, and that's because there's, you just don't have the time. Was the city looking better at that time? It definitely was, other than trash cans sitting out all the time by the curb, because you had various haulers, so. But it's still, you still have problems. A lot of it's, a lot of things have changed because of the one hauler, whether it's, people look at it good or, good or bad, it definitely has. But, I guess, say, there's only so many hours in a day.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns further from the council? If I have, I'll, I'll talk to you and the manager about it, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't it stated earlier that we could not do administration part-time?
Um, I think.
There's a call.
For clarification, in, in the contracts, it indicates that you cannot do permanent part-time, so it cannot be a permanent position. What's being proposed is that it would be a ten-month position, so it would be in compliance.
So we, we have to re, reauthorize it?
Well, the anticipation is by the end of next year, there would be sufficient revenues generated to support at least one full-time position.
And that would, and it'd probably fall within the union?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. So both of these positions will be at least just like ten months, correct? Okay.
And, and like I said, this will be my last comment, I just, you know, if there was some, if there's some way we can have further discussion about it before another budget process is moving forward, but somewhere to have like a, a metric tied to it, like, like I was kind of suggesting that we would say, okay, it actually kind of produced, you know, we don't want to cite people to death, but we, you know, we want to make sure, because I think the, the one example I think of with the old Ponderosa thing, I know we went the whole legal route, and, and I think that eventually it's, I guess, going to pay off, hopefully, very soon, so I think that.
Well, that property has changed hands. If you look at this parking lot out there in that strip mall, that individual that had it previously did that, not because they wanted to, but because of code enforcement, that was eighty-four thousand square feet of asphalt, which was undoubtedly not cheap, things of that nature, so.
See, I think when we, when we do do it, it can be positive, so, thank you, appreciate it. Seeing no further discussion on that, we're going to move forward to, I guess it's like an item, it should be an item, just to close session, I'm not going to read that, but just, the manager has requested that, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Moved and supported.
Would have a roll, roll call vote, unless there's any discussion about it.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mearon.
Yes.
Okay, we will re-adjourn in closed session? I might, I might steal your time. Is that okay?
Oh, all right.
This is the one you put tonight's.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, here, this is.
You have to stick around.
We'll come back, we will.
Okay.
Me.
I think of that. Yes, we have, we have to acknowledge that.
Never.
Woo!
Hey, I, they were knocked down.